Ms. Breach?
Here.
Mr. Groh?
Here.
Ms. Jones?
Here.
Ms. LaRocca?
Here.
Ms. Slazinski?
Here.
Ms. Pinkney?
Here.
Ms. Saunders?
Here.
Ms. Etienne?
Yes.
Ms. Saba-Zeir.
Here. Please stand for flags. All right, we do not have the presentation as speaking, but I do have a few things that I want to go and review before we address the agenda. For those of you who have completed the financial disclosure, I thank you. Those of you who have not, it needs to be completed by April 30th. If you are having difficulties, please see Mr. Hastings. This is a CUSAC score, so please, we need to have this completed by April 30th. April is going to be a very busy month for us. As you are aware, we have a town hall meeting that is scheduled for April 13th. We will be meeting at the City Council Chambers at 6:00 PM. It will be a board meeting, and it will be recorded. I'm also going to be asking for two special, additional special meetings. Before that, I will explain to you why that's the one special meeting. And then the second one is because I am working towards this board becoming a certified board. But going back to the town hall meeting, we're going to discuss that. Would you like to do that before we address our agenda? Okay, so allow me to finish my announcements. Ms. -- Mrs. Jones and Mr. Grillo will address the town hall meeting tonight. Ms. Etienne is unable to be with us. Ms. Gil? The second special meeting, I'm asking you to look at your calendar. I need a date tonight. These are the following dates: April 12th, 18th, 24th, and 25th. The 12th, the 18th, the 24th, and the 25th.
Do you need wine?
I just need wine. Now, I'm just eating wine. Okay, this is the deal. We are very close to becoming a certified board. I spoke with Kathy Wine-Hop, our New Jersey School Board Representative, and Executive Staff and Superintendent Gray and State Monitor, our Board Councilman, Mr. Hastings, please forgive my back, but I just wanted to address the board members. We're very close to becoming a certified board. We have -- we need 16 credits. We have one. So, we need seven more. Each time the Jersey School Board Representative comes to our district and provides professional training from us, that one hour is one credit. So, at this meeting, whatever day you pick, as per availability, it's going to be a three-hour meeting. What will be discussed? That meeting will be, Mr. Hastings will further discuss the budget with us, which coincides with our regular scheduled board meeting on the 26th, which will then be presented to the public. The other item that she will discuss is board members. What we do before, during, and after a board meeting, such as having respect for another, being prepared for your agenda, reading the committee minutes, things of that sort. And we could get three credits if we only need four. If we have another meeting in May, not yet, we will have a meeting in May, and we will also have a meeting in June, those are our four points. That covers the seven. We are then eligible to become a certified board and will be certified by the fall of this year. So that's the deal. So, this is work. I know it's really time and commitment, but we're all on the same page. And this is going to be a really good one as we are moving this district forward. So please, look at the dates again, the 12th, 18th, 24th, and 25th. Okay?
So you're going up to six, the nine, seven, and ten?
Uh, usually Kathy is here at six, and I know that you have a --
Well, I'm not saying, Dave, but the problem, I never know what's going to happen.
I understand. But if you come in late, it's okay. Just need you here. So, what's the date?
Oh, October 11th.
Okay? So shall I pay? The eight? Okay, so the 35th. And the 18th? I do give you, okay, I agree. Mr. Saunders? Okay, so I'll bless you. So I'm looking at the 18th. Mr. Pinkney?
I'm at 18th.
Mr. LaRocca?
Yes.
Okay. All right. 18?
So we'll schedule a special meeting for April 18th. That's a Wednesday at 6:00 PM.
Yes. Oh, wait a minute. Wait a minute. What's the 12th?
Thursday.
Oh, you got it. No, that's okay. We'll stick with the 18th. All right, we'll take it quick. Okay, because we are here by 8:00. You know why? Now, 8:00, say 9:00.
The 18th? I thought you said that was a three-hour meeting.
Yeah, something on TV. Empire.
Well, you said it was going to be a three-hour meeting.
I know. It will be. I'll just --
Did you want to make a Thursday, that's the 19th? Is that -- did you make a mistake?
No, I was like, can't do Thursday.
Yeah.
So we'll stick with the 18th. I'll sabotage. We'll do the 18th. Eight, eight. Oh, that's the radio. You're not over here, the 19th. So the 18th is fine. Is that okay? You have a conflict?
If it's the 18th, the radio?
No, the 19th.
18th is fine.
Okay, so the 18th, Mr. Hastings is going to take care of that. That's our special meeting. Okay, at 6:00 PM. 6:00, 6:00. Okay? And, I'm sorry, 6:09.
Can we get out of here?
Okay. And I believe that is all that I have for you. I'm going to now pass it over to Mrs. Jones and Mr. Grillo.
Just like something, sure.
Sure. Um, we're going to have a town hall meeting. It is scheduled for the 13th of April. After four other dates that we tried, and it didn't work, we finally got the 15th in line. Starting at 6:30 in the evening, it'll be at City Hall. And we're going to be having flyers go out a number of times to the parents to try and get them to come in for the meeting. We divided up the different topics among the people who were comfortable with them. And Connie is going to be talking about the sports program within the school. Mr. Urr -- no. LaRocca will be talking about the program at Brookdale, as well as the financial situation with the charter schools and other special programs we have where the kids can graduate with an associate degree and the other special programs we have. Barbara will be talking about some of the special programs in the high school. And Joe will be talking about --
More sustainability, maybe?
Yes, the green program, which should save us a lot of money that we can put back into the budget for the children to use. And we're going to have the discussion on the preschool program and the after-school program and how well rated our programs are right now and which other programs. So it's relatively covered. We'll have -- Mrs. Gray will be there and we'll give her a chance to say something at the mic. We'll shut up for a few minutes. But basically, that's what we'll be covering, just to give the parents information. And with the posters that Mrs. Gray was talking about, I think that will just back it up even more. And also, we're going to do a little survey to see how many parents would be interested in a parenting program. A lot of parents don't have a lot of guidance that they grew up with or questions they have, how to handle certain situations. And if we can get a good number of people together, it might be a real good situation for communication and clarity and just to let people know we're here and that we're there for them. And that's about it.
So, yeah. So, one of the things that some people have asked me about is whether there's going to be questions from the audience. There's going to be a Q and A. And so, there will be a Q and A, and the way it's going to be done is as attendees come into the town hall meeting, they'll have a chance to write down their questions. And those questions will be passed over to someone who will review and then ask the questions to us. So, and then, and we're going to, hopefully, we'll meet together soon to kind of go through the run-up show. And that's basically it. Carol said everything about it. The good thing is that this is the first time that we, as individual board members, get to have a conversation with parents and voters and taxpayers, everybody that invests in some way in the Asbury Park schools. And we get to cut through a lot of the fog and talk about the facts and everything that's going on in our schools. So it's really going to be a great event. We do have a flyer that I've been meaning to put out on Facebook. There was a little bit of a confusion whether it should be done through the school board or because this is something, from what I remember, from what I recall, that Dr. Repole was saying when he was here, when we were conceiving this idea, was that this is something for the school board members. And if so, as long as I get the okay from everyone here, I'd like to post it on social media, put all of us as the hosts, and do it that way. If that's not the way we're doing it, then we'll have to move to the school district.
I'd like to get that, Carol.
Yeah. It is part of our district goals. Our district goal is part of our group agenda and what we're supposed to be doing. So I'm trying to think if we should be doing it on the district website. And I saw the flyer, and they did less like electionary kind of stars and stuff. It just looks more like a campaign flyer than a, it's like a school board, or kind of like the little logo's not on it.
Well, the reason there, it was intentioned to not put the logo on it because, again, from when this was conceived, this wasn't something that was the school board, I'm sorry, the school district itself talking to the, having the conversation with the public, but us as individual board members.
We are the school district.
Right. I mean, I could put it on there if that's the case, but it's really, you know, that's I think why we wanted some clarification here from our council.
I would caution board members from posting on their own social media pages, only because it could be viewed as private action, which may create issue school ethics-wise. Instead, to the extent that is possible, I would suggest that the district post it up there, district's Facebook page or whatever the district uses, district's social media outlets, just to avoid any issues.
So I emailed into the school districts two weeks ago. So I think now we have the correct date and the correct time and everything. So if we can get that up, that would really be great because we really want to push it out and share it and make sure that it goes out there. And if somebody wants to put, you know, a PNG file of the school district logo on there, then go ahead. It was intentionally done, but not as much, yeah, not as much in there. So that way, we needed to change it up.
I'm sorry, just to also, I guess, sort of finer point on what's at the forefront. There's nothing in my eyes that would prohibit a school board member from clicking Share on their, I'm sorry, on their personal Facebook pages. But I would also caution any board members as a process, you know, from a process standpoint. Anytime anything is posted that in any way reflects anything related to the school district, you may want to, you should consider putting the disclaimer at each post. I'm saying this is, you know, my personal cabinet, I can give you the language, I just don't want anybody to get jammed out of some --
Oh, yeah. I definitely got that.
Any questions regarding the town hall? And I just want to say, make this note statement, as we are moving forward, you know, we're stepping out and we're doing different things. And sometimes we make mistakes. So when we make those mistakes, I make mistakes, it's not to exclude any member because we are a team. And so I want everyone to feel that you are valuable, necessary, and appreciative. So if you felt excluded, my apologies to anyone who felt that way. As we move forward, there will now be a full discussion from the committee. The committee's chair makes a recommendation regarding an activity or an event. You can make the recommendation, but it's going to now be open for full discussion so that everyone is able to per day. Okay? Yes, please.
In reference to that, I forgot to mention Eric. Eric will be handling how much we have improved over the last few years with statistics and grade levels and numbers and all of that. So my apologies, Eric. I didn't mean to. Pass you by.
One other quick, just remember everyone that also, this is the first, the first time that we're doing this, so we're all kind of, we're still trying to feel it out and how it's going to, you know, come to fruition for future town halls. This isn't, this definitely isn't a one-trick pony. We want, we want this to be kind of the start of a tradition where we really go out and have a conversation with everyone. So, you know, there'll be tweaks here and there, and I'm sure it will be 100%, but never let the perfect beginning be of a good end.
Any other questions? So now we're going to move forward.
And we do hope now interpreters are Spanish and Creole.
Hopefully, Ms. Etienne will be back. Surely.
And maybe somebody from the audience can help us out.
You know what I wanted to add?
She's not listening.
Ms. Gray, I don't know if it, I suspect we should be city council station as possible, but I didn't know whether we should have any kind of like water or impressions or something at this meeting. And I didn't know what to do about that. I haven't had a chance to see it. So I'll get back to you.
I think the quick answer to that, whatever I may add, is to get a local business to donate some food, right? Some water or something like that.
I have no cookies in Oklahoma.
Okay. Any other questions? Moving right along with the comments. Mrs. Gray, our acting superintendent, would you please get our superintendent's report?
Good evening, board members and public. Very delighted to share our monthly student enrollment has been consistent. Our attendance has also remained consistent. Our ethnicity and gender, I received a request recently. As you'll note, we have an increase. There's a little diversity occurring beyond our black and Hispanic population. We have more white students entering the district, as well as a request from our soon-to-be director of school counseling for interpreters for Hindi, Punjabi, and Arabic. So we are finding that our school district is becoming a lot more diverse in terms of our suspensions. We often know that there are peaks and valleys. And so I am very pleased with where we are, with Dr. Howard's leadership and her constant monitoring of our social and emotional learning initiative, team initiatives could be. Our teachers are receiving ongoing professional development around how to engage our students. Again, when you talk about secondary education, you know that there are always going to be certain times of the school year where you will see peaks and valleys. So we've been very consistent in regard to all of those areas. As it relates to our agenda, I would like to request a consent agenda. Request.
Yes. Before we go to that, pull this person's name. According to Board Policy 1, Row 1, 01C7. So please step to the podium if you have statements, concerns. You have three minutes. We need your name, your address, all your financial information, too. Okay, seeing that there isn't anyone, I'm closing to public participation. State Monitor, did you ever report for us?
I just that, oh, I guess I did, yes. But it was a, certainly a credit to the district that I am a commissioner, who I think was, the district was well represented on Monday at the confirmation hearing. With a very large contingency of students, teachers, administrators, people from throughout the state that either knew Dr. Repole at one time or representing district organizations and interest groups. It was great, I think, for our students to witness the question-and-answer period and exchange between the senators and Dr. Repole. I think everybody that went was very proud of the accomplishments that keeps made in the district as well as representing, I thought, education so well on Monday. That's not a easy situation to be in, I thought, just as a side. Many of the questions of the senators belonged really in the Senate because they were not in the area of education that the commissioner really has been guarding to do anything about. They were not working in the area of requiring changes in the law or statutes that might be able to address some of their concerns. It was interesting, though, to see the demonstration outside by the charter schools and the concern that they had in the representation that they sent. So all in all, I thought, not only was it a proud day, I'm sure, for Dr. Repole and his family, but it certainly should have been a proud day for Asbury Park. Having been in education so many years, I can tell you that I'm thrilled to finally see somebody sitting as commissioner of education who is coming from the ranks above education. I have seen many sit in that office who are attorneys, no, slept with attorneys. Attorneys, philosophers, you know, a different representation other than education. And I think that it's also an absolute thrill to see someone come from the urban areas because that has not been true of the commissioner of education in the past. And it certainly is an additional thrill to see our first black commissioner of education in the state of New Jersey. So all in all, you know, it's not an easy route to get there, and I think that he deserves all the credit and respect that we can possibly give him and we're be willing to work with him. He now has to sever all of his ties with Asbury Park. But I do know that he's just a humble guy, so that makes it kind of nice, too. So that's actually the only report that I can --
Thank you, Ms. Gray. Thank you, Ms. Gray.
And his killers. And his resignation is finalized, is finalized in the district as well now that he has been appointed.
Thank you. Ms. Etienne, just a second.
Yes, we need to accept the net pile, item A and B. Are they on? Got a motion, please?
Second.
Questions, comments? Mr. Grillo? Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Breach?
Yes.
Ms. LaRocca?
Yes.
Ms. Slazinski? Mr. Pinkney?
Yes.
Ms. Saunders? Ms. Saba-Zeir?
Yes.
Thank you. We also have item 10, revised calendar on A1. Got a motion, please?
Second.
Ms. Slazinski?
Yes.
Ms. Saba-Zeir?
Yes.
Ms. Breach?
Yes.
Mr. Grillo?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. LaRocca?
Yes.
Ms. Pinkney?
Yes.
Ms. Saunders?
Yes.
Thank you.
And now, that I'm happy with the superintendent. Tonight is a thrill to me as my members, there'll be some members tonight reflected here that will be called down part of my official team on executive committee, so I'm very delighted. And I'm asking for a consent agenda for Page B1 to be that reflects the information. I'll go with that.
Second.
Question? Whoa, huh?
All items in the C-section, Ms. Slazinski?
Yes.
Mr. Groh?
Yes.
Ms. Breach?
Yes, the same from B3H.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. LaRocca?
Yes.
Mr. Pinkney?
Yes.
Ms. Saunders?
Yes.
Ms. Saba-Zeir?
Yes.
All items carried. Got a motion for all items in the C-section, C1 number 1 through C8 number 4.
Also?
Question? Any questions? Okay.
Mr. Grillo?
Yes.
Ms. Slazinski?
Yes, on everything but C511.
Ms. Breach?
Yes, except for everything C511.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. LaRocca? Yes, no on number 11 on C5. Ms. Pinkney?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Ms. Saba-Zeir?
Yes.
All items carried.
Motion to adjourn. Come on, one second.
Can I just point out one thing? I attended the job fair on Friday briefly, and very well done, I'm not sure who miscused living that altogether, but very good, thank you.
All right, before we adjourn, Mr. Grillo?
Yes, so, Madam President, I attended the Urban Boards Committee at JSBA last Friday, and what was being featured was our social emotional initiative, and yoga, and meditation that we've done with the students. And we had representatives there from Newark, Camden, Patterson, and Elizabeth, and all over New Jersey, and Ms. DiLorenzo made this incredible presentation, where we actually all got up and got to breathe and do our thing, and Dr. Howard was there as well. And I was blown away just from the presentation itself. It was incredible to see all these other districts salivating and wanting to know more about this program, and it is so incredible that we're leading the way on this, which only a few years ago was considered, you know, hippy-dippy, wacky stuff, and now we were able to show, we're able to show the rest of the state that there are real numbers and facts that, that show that our kids are improving and doing a great job because of the program, so I just wanted to bring that up to everyone, that we should really be proud of the social emotional program we have.
That's how we do it down here, man. Joe, just remind me, I went to the seminar on Friday, National Gardens, University, and Dr. School's, who are starting to do gardens, or kind of like, and they mentioned that years ago, nobody had been there, and there were 118 people at the meeting, and very interesting. I learned something about the videos in...
What's that?
You pick them when they start to color, sitting on the vine, getting ready for just a little water, and playing.
Those birds like...
So the other thing I learned was real good, anybody that's cut ones in the garden? I'm sure you did. They didn't take toilet paper walls, and you put it...
Around the stem?
You know, around the stem, and then it's... You have paper towels and stuff, so, you know, it's not called that word.
Our superintendent has a comment?
Hey, Chloe, thank you, Mr. Larraca, for mentioning the job fair. That was under the leadership of Principal Baumgartner and her amazing team. Very delighted that we have a team approach here in the Asbury Park School District, as is reflective of our social emotional learning programs under the direction of Dr. Howard. I also feel it's particularly noteworthy to mention the dynamic pre-k and kindergarten registration event that took place this past Saturday. For those of you that are not on social media, there was a clear example in that event where we signed up a parent for GED classes, her child for pre-k for kindergarten, and a fourth grade student for our summer steam academy. So when we talk about building a bright future, that equals hope and opportunities, and that is a safety net, thanks to you, that we were able to blanket this family with, and really give this mom both an opportunity for a brighter future. Thank you very much.
Awesome.
And thanks to my dynamic team members, some of whom are in the audience today, tonight.
And on that lift, we thank you all for being here, you know, we have a busy month, for any problem, we can do this, we're a team, and I bid you all a good night.